Good evening, everyone. We will now call to order the City of Gilway Library Commission um meeting for Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty five, and we are beginning at seven oh seven P M. So we will start with our roll call.
Uh Chair Baxter.
Present.
Uh Vice Chair Dushabadi.
Present.
And Commissioner Lawrie.
Present.
Thank you, and now we will go to item number three, our secretary's report.
Yes, the meeting packet was posted on Friday, June thirteenth.
Thank you, and now we will move to item number four, the approval of me of minutes from our last meeting, which was um Wednesday, February twelfth.
Oh, no.
April ninth.
Wait, are you looking at the minutes or you looking at the agenda?
I'm looking at the. Oh, there we go. I have that right there, see?
Oh.
Okay, thank you so much, Adam, and it's good to see you, Adam.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, so we're going to have um uh number four, approval of minutes from Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, we'll start.
Okay, I second that.
So we have um the motion to accept the meeting agenda and minutes from April ninth, and we have um one uh approved, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so our motion passes three yays and zero nays. And now we will move to item number five, the approval of our agenda for today. So if everyone can take a moment, look over our agenda.
Would you like to motion to accept our agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Yes, I had moved to approve and to approve that.
I guess I seconded.
Okay, and all in favor? Aye, all right, so we have approval of our minutes um um and it passes with three yeses and zero nos. And now we will go to item number six, our library staff recognition, and yes.
All right, so uh we are very lucky to have Newe Trinh here today.
Yeah.
She is one of our floater librarians, which means she has the ability to work in locations that need extra assistance because of the absence. Um just a library that needs more than just temporary staffing, uh so Newe has been with us for like one and a year. So we've been very fortunate that uh she's been able to join us for that long. Uh she brings an amazing amount of talent and skill to everything she does. She started our first bilingual storytime in Vietnamese.
Nice.
So she runs that, and again, uh I think being able to tap into the interests, the passions, and the abilities of any staff member who comes into the Gilway Library is something that we really want to um create an environment for. And uh Newe has really ran with that spirit and enthusiasm, so I'll let her talk a little bit more about what she does and who she is and um her uh her kind of work here for over the last year.
Nice.
Thank you, Cassandra. Yeah, and uh yes, so I'm so unfortunate, I mean, I'm so fortunate that I have like amazing boss and super team that I love. That's why I'm staying around here. I'm, yeah, I work different library, so that's the best.
Oh, awesome.
Record that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Do I have a job for you too? When are you free? Yeah, uh Newe, would you like to speak a little bit about maybe programs you've started or things that you're interested in continuing, and also maybe some a little bit about your library career?
Sure, yes, I am relatively new, cuz I uh I've been in the library for like over a year.
Nice.
So um and uh for here, I, we have four uh storytimes, and I in charge of two. Which of us, it's storytime every Monday, and bilingual, English and Vietnamese storytime every Wednesday.
Nice.
So, yeah, it's amazing to serve the community, it's lovely that the kids come, and they was like, oh, I don't speak Vietnamese, but I, they learned how to, you know, the storytime, and it's come to us, and it was like, oh, this is the Vietnamese, vote for it, so I'm like, wow, I taught something. They're so lovely, and um, yeah, and I I also um manage uh the um collection.
Oh, very nice, that's good.
Try to make it nice.
Yeah.
Serve the community better.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, and I also uh help my teams have a more around thirty programs for the summer reading programs, so yeah, so yes, this is the.
There we go.
We got, yeah, we got, we got this like that. Did you make that?
Sorry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, buddy.
Yeah, you can always check my, you know, library websites, and it's free for everyone.
That's right.
Wow.
That's free.
Try to, yeah, help the kids uh come to libraries and enjoy everything.
That's wonderful.
Yes, I'll ask you one more question, because, you know, inquiry minds. Um what made you choose a career in librarianship? Um what do you think it fulfills for you, and what do you think, uh, you know, what drew you to the profession?
Sort of questions, yes. I I just love working with people and the community, so and I think it's one way to kind of working and giving back to the community. Learn about the community, because I'm also a minority group.
Yeah.
Um so I'd say, oh, um, let's just learn about uh the community and see how I can do work and help them out. And I also um I'm, I was very lucky to have a mentor that uh that's kind of like, huh, I think you, you can do it.
Oh, that's awesome, that always helps.
Yeah, and yeah. And I'm like, yeah, I think I got the right path.
Another couple of questions.
Here we go, so he's got questions.
Glad that you're doing this, uh if uh this is telling in Vietnamese language. So how many kids do you attend with the story to you?
The number is very different from today's, yeah, it depends on um variety reasons, but uh today I have about twenty-five.
Oh, that's a very big number.
Usual. The usual numbers.
The age group?
The age group is from uh I'm very young, from three to six of them.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yes, yeah.
Um do you, and you read in Vietnamese and in English bilingual storytime?
Um I try to include everyone, so not a lot of kids speak Vietnamese, so I read English book, and then I teach them some words.
That's wonderful.
So they can learn, because if I read the whole books, it's kind of hard for them to get and make it too long, and it probably gets boring, so I'm just like, okay, guys, or I can te- uh I teach them counts from one to ten, or colors, or animals.
Nice.
Songs.
Yeah, very, yeah, and I bet the parents love it.
And they, they learn too.
And they're learning too, yeah, they're really coming for themselves.
Because when I uh when I um ask questions, they answer even before the kid.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I was like, they pay attention, that's great.
She said you are floating, how much of the float is there in my library?
The um the collection?
No, she said she has, she has a floating load, how much of that float is there here?
So it kind of depends on what the need is of the individual library. Um for us, we we needed something a little more um stable because of, as you see, uh we've really increased our programming, and we realize it's not a permanent solution. Um eventually floaters have to float to other libraries that need assistance, uh but the idea is um to be able to make sure that we're able to cover the things we're able to cover. Uh the needs that the library has, as well as provide opportunities for newer staff or staff to try new locations, try new types of programming.
Right.
Uh to really kind of get to experience all of our different libraries throughout the system.
Have you been here for the past one year in this library, or you have been?
You and I also at the, at the locations, cuz I don't work forty hours. I work for like twenty-four or thirty-two hours, and I have other time to float around.
Thank you for your service.
Of course.
Yes, thank you so much, come on, come on.
There we go.
Thank you.
Did you go through my storytime?
How many of this, as in, yes, probably, I think we have, yeah, this, you know, yes, and Spanish.
We have Vietnamese and Spanish currently. Um in previous years, we've had um a sign, baby sign storytime, so we really try to, again, um we wanna build for the community, not just of today.
Yeah.
But for future community.
Yeah.
And the idea that, oh, we should only do X Y Z type of storytime, because X Y Z people live in this area.
Right.
Is kind of um not our mission. Our mission is to create a collaborative, cohesive, caring community, and we do that by offering new opportunities.
Absolutely.
Kind of looking at, you know, uh when, as Newe mentioned, when we first started, or when she first started the Vietnamese storytime, it it was a small handful of people, and I believe Newe's, you know, enthusiasm and her spirit to just include everyone and say, no, 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 this isn't a Vietnamese-only story.
Right.
This is a storytime that is bilingual, so please join us, and, you know, I think you've developed a really great following of families who maybe Vietnamese is not spoken in their home, but, I mean, they're kind of
Yeah.
Not the point, the point, to learn something new and expand the minds of our our children in our households, and what better way to do that than to really see a parent also step outside of their comfort zone and learn something new along with their children, right? Like, that's a, that's a really great moment. So to be able to facilitate that um with, you know, it it starts, you know, kind of up here, this idea from our admin and from our kind of strategic plan of like being inclusive, we welcome, we connect, and then it comes down to our branch level or our location level where we're able to, you know, find the right people to fit into that, and their ideas, and their their programming skills, and then being able to report it back to you all.
Right.
Uh to kind of, you know, bring it full circle to as, you know, what we do and and how we support the community.
Another idea is actually having there's something outside the normal language. It adds to the unity and cohesion of the community, it's a very good idea.
Thank you, I think, you know, just having the right people at the right time and the right uh.
Even if you understand the languages, they're hearing something different from what you're used to in simple.
Yes, not just, not just the language, cuz we also have a, uh, I also had a program last year of um, it's called Moon Festival.
The Moon Festival, yeah.
And uh so we promote like learn about the different culture and stuff.
Absolutely.
Crafting and a little presentation about um what is Moon Festival.
Yeah.
What's it for, and then some little cake, moon cake.
Yeah.
And crafting, so the kids can learn what it is.
I do notice our community is increasing in more children and families that are diverse.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm see, I don't know if anyone else is seeing that, but I'm noticing that, yeah.
And I, I see that they're coming here too, so I'm so glad to have them.
Who knows what will be like twenty years from now? Right, nice. Okay, so let's see. Um thank you, it's, we're so happy to have you, let's give you a hand, yes.
You know.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us today.
Yes. Yeah, and and everyone you meet, tell them about the Library Commission, and we would love to have them come. When people walk into the library, tell them that we meet here, and they can come in.
Sure.
And you can come too, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad. Good to see you.
Perfect.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um now we're going to move to item number seven, we're gonna move to unfinished business, and seven point one is our Library Commission work plan and selection of one commissioner to attend the California Library Association Conference in October.
Okay, well, I will be delivering the staff report, so if you turn inside your packet, there is a staff report with uh information I will be presenting to you. Uh so as you uh may know, the city council did adopt uh its budget as well as the commission work plans that you proposed, uh so if you actually go to the next page, so page two of this staff report.
Page two, yeah, two of four.
Two, well, it says two of three.
Two of three, okay, why am I on two of four? Oh, hmm, I probably went too far, here.
No, no, actually, no.
Okay. Okay, there we go.
Yeah, so there, this is the previous one.
Okay.
And then we're on page two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, okay, so for your uh new work plan, um anyway, so as you know, you you went through the steps of uh articulating your work plan, submitting your work plan, it got approved, so now you have a new work plan, so actually, if you go to page three, uh this is, this is gonna be the work plan for the next two fiscal years. You see where I am on the top of page three now?
Yes, do, now, the twenty-six, twenty-seven work plan, do we need to go through that or not?
Um, well, you, this is, these are the items that uh the commission uh uh not proposed, it has been uh uh approved, so you don't, there's really no new business on any of these. Obviously, the reports uh from um the Gilway Library, the San Clara Library are going to be presented. There is one item of active uh of action that you will need to take tonight um is selecting a commissioner to participate in the California Library Association annual conference, which will be in Riverside this year in October. As the commission is aware, last year, uh they selected Chair uh Coverston Baxter, who attended the American Library Association Conference, which was held in San Diego.
Yes.
Um so this year, uh it was recommended um that the commissioner attend the California Library Association Conference, which, like I mentioned, for this fiscal year, uh there is enough funding to select one. Um that would include airfare, hotel, per diem meals, as well as transportation, um including the flight.
And it's in October?
It's in October.
The twenty-third and twenty-fifth.
Yes. And I believe it starts on the twenty-third, so like what we, what was done with uh uh Chair Coverston Baxter is, I believe she went the night before possibly.
I think I did, I I think I went the night before, cuz I was there in the morning.
Yeah. Uh.
Did she just for one person, right?
So there's enough funding to be covered for one person.
Okay, so the, just here, okay, so here it's saying that, oh, this is um submitted conference. Oh, okay, this is for a yearly of seventy-seven thousand five hundred, but they only approved twenty-five hundred.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would like to go this year, if if you guys are okay with me going.
Yes, absolutely. Um so do we need to discuss, or should we make a motion?
So you can make a motion, um and and then offline, uh either with myself or Harsho um or Vince, one of us will get in touch with you to schedule. Because we try to do as much as we can on our credit cards, so you don't, we don't have to worry about reimbursement, but at some point, when you get to the conference, we'll have to reimburse you for uh things like a lift or or food, things like that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um. Okay, so, um. Uh. I, I'm, uh can I take a moment to just read the, this right here for a moment?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay, just give me a second. Okay, that was the work plan we submitted, February twenty twenty-five. Then on April ninth, the commission reviewed the work plan draft provided from the plant, which were ultimately submitted to city council to review along with the budgetary request. Okay, then on June second, city council work plan recommended budget, which included a modified recommendation of training funds. So can you talk, so can you talk a little bit about that? The mod- um why it was modified, because my, our understanding was that there was conversations about more than one person going, so that it could be an experience, and that there was funding available, m- more than enough to cover that.
So from what I'm aware of is, yes, that is true, cuz I believe I was actually at that meeting.
Yeah.
Discussed it, so um when it was submitted to the city administrator, who then submits it to uh the council for the proposed budget, um there were other commissions who had also put in requests.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Looking, trying to be equitable.
Absolutely.
In trying to send at least one person from each of the commissions to a conference that's similar to the California Library Association Conference. I believe it was determined that in order to be able to send at least one person from every conference, this is how much we can allocate for.
Well, that's very good to hear. I wanted to see, so yeah, I, cuz I don't know if other commissions have gone to conferences.
Um, they have.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yes.
That's good, I'm glad to see that.
Some conferences are local, so the costs are very, are minimal.
Yeah.
Right, but this one, of course, when it requires flight in a hotel.
Yeah.
Um it 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 gets very pricey. If the conference were held in San Jose, uh obviously, we could send more than one person.
That's a very good point.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm glad the other councils are going, okay.
And I, and I apologize for not providing that addition.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to read, because I remember the last conversation was that there was a lot of conversation about having more than one person, if it's, yeah, okay, so, so now I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, and we can go through the other items, just, just so, um in case you wanted to add additional feedback or anything.
Okay.
Um so for example, and I'm looking on page three for the new, the new work plan here.
Okay, great, okay.
Your plan, so this is your plan for the next two fiscal years.
Right.
To study a community art installation or display at the Gilway Library.
Yeah.
Represent the library commission at library functions and programs such as storytime and appreciation days. And and that, of course, is something similar to what you, I think, had proposed, or what what you had done in the previous work plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh provide feedback, promise San Francisco County Library System regarding library services, so that is continued. Participate in the annual uh California Library Association Conference, or A L A, if it's held in California. Uh promote the commission's purpose and inform the Gilway community of library commission's presence and visibility. Um and provide recommendations to the city council regarding capital improvements to the Gilway Library to be funded by the unspent library bond proceeds, of course, that is carried over in previous.
Right. Um, did you have a comment?
No, I wanted to just uh make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead, you want a motion and then I'll say.
Yeah, uh I move to the allocate the funds board. The conference.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that she attend the C L A conference that will be held at Riverside Convention Center um between October twenty-third and twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, all those in fit.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes uh to Senator Lowery to the C L A conference in Riverside in October, and um yes, like I said, a member of the city Gilway staff will reach out to her.
Okay, crystal.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Okay, so now we're going to move um to item, let's see, uh oh, did we cap? Um we got the staff report, right? Uh, did I skip the staff report, unfinished business?
Uh, no.
That's it, okay.
We skipped, and there is no member of the public here.
Yes, public comment, okay.
No one here, so um we can move forward, but uh yeah, no, you've, you've received your work plan. You selected a commissioner, so you can move on to the library.
Actually, um possible actions on the third one.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to speak, speak to that.
Yes.
Go toward our work plans.
Yes.
Okay, so, um still two of two under unfinished business, seven point one, and it's the third. So, um since I've joined the commission, I've been very excited about participating into, in the programs that the library has already had established. Um, I've had an opportunity um in, I believe it was April, to go to the Poppy Jasper Film Festival.
Nice.
And the library previously had hosted the film festival here. And I would love for this to be our focus, part of our work plan.
Yeah.
Would be to um bring the Poppy Jasper Film Festival um films here, but for um community development, community service to uh facilitate a conversation. So basically, the platform of the festival, they have films to represent as many voices as possible. They have Women's Day, they have um LGBTQ, they have um Hispanic, they have as many whatever voices, whatever films to um that um people submit, they try to um have a day to emphasize it. Um and with that day, they have speakers, they have a panel, so for instance, for films that represent veterans, they will have people from the community that would be able to, after the film is over and that people have questions or comments, they could direct them to services, they can help provide um any information that is needed.
Mm-hmm.
So we would like to bring that platform here, not just during the festival, but leading up to that festival, have it as part of the community's um a way to use film to initiate conversation. Um coordinate with books that are already in the library system, that could also um work with the film. And then um the Poppy Jasper and also um the library has a lot of connections, like with community services and so forth, that they will bring panelists that could facilitate the the conversation and provide resources. So for our part, we would um be able to see the programs that the library has coming up already, like they're having Women's Month, Women's Week, Veterans, um Domestic Violence, whatever topics that are already part of the program. Um we have the opportunity to let Poppy Jasper know what genre of films we're interested in. They will provide the films to us, we can screen them and decide what films would work best for the programs that we're looking to promote, and then we would also add the the panel, the speakers, the the um community that could support what topic we're looking to move forward with.
Wow, is uh is that cost, does that cost?
The only thing that would cost would, she's looking at about twenty-five to a hundred dollars for film, and it depends on the length of the film, so a short film would be about twenty-five dollars. Um I was so impressed, in love, I'm volunteering personally. I'm on the, I'm the chair of submissions now.
That's awesome.
I jumped in with both feet. That, the community, the what, um, how she moves conversation forward is amazing. And I think it would be great with the mission that the library already has, and it will give us an opportunity, not just to speak on programs that are already implemented, but be a part of one, and to foster the law. And to foster it along, to add our input, um, in, while we're going along and, and pretty much own this. Part of the, the, um, bringing the Poppy Jasper films here. And whatever collaboration that we need from the library, Cassandra's on board.
Yes.
A few question. So where is this festival right now? Where do they hold it?
They hold it in, um, Morgan Hill, Gilroy, San Juan, and Hollister.
So it's multiple places at one time?
Throughout, I think she's at twelve days now.
Twelve days?
Yeah.
Is it, which, which part of the year?
So it was in April, I believe, I think it was April.
Uh, the main question I have is, what is it that library is supposed to do and what is it that the commission is? Is, is supposed to do in your.
Right, so, um, we are also in aligned with providing, um, a voice. And the film does that, they bring up topics that might not be easy to talk about. Or might not be, um, trending, or they, it might be, but, so what we're gonna do, we're going to partner with. Those topics that are relevant to our community.
Mm-hmm.
And the library normally already has programs that are going on, so we can say. Again, if it's Women's Week or Month or Domestic Violence wa- awareness, or whatever the focus is, then we have. Poppy Jasper Films have movies that also are also looking to, um, raise awareness of these same topics.
So you like the commission, you hear we decide what to begin and what to promote, that kind of thing?
Exactly, something that would benefit the community and we can, you know, look at books, we can look at film. We can see what services are available.
Wha- what would you say to the library, do we have the, do we have the capacity to host this?
Sure, so I think, um, it's really a great. You know, I think, as we've discussed this year, our focus is really becoming like, uh, making sure we're a catalyst.
I like that.
For positive experiences in the community. And I really, um, I think it's kind of my personal kind of goal. As the community librarian here is to make sure that we're able to collaborate holistically with. The CBOs in the area, with our city partners. And to be able to do that, um, you know, the library is kind of a really great spot for that, so. Um, as Commissioner Lowery's men- Lowery's mentioning, um, we can do like. Okay, the film is about, say, there's three topics we pick for the year, or you all decide is the focus for the community for that year.
Or based on what you, your guys' things too.
Yes, so whatever you feel like, hey, I think the community would really enjoy that, or that's a topic that's very pertinent.
Right.
You can kind of give your suggestions, um, you know, cuz the commission can take it back to the board. They can kind of find some films that might fit that role. And then the library can support by posting. And then also connecting with our community collaborators to say, hey, we, we wanna do something on, um. You know, um, indigenous languages that are spoken in our area, or whatever the topic happens to be, and then we can have a presenter come to discuss. You know, yes, I, I speak this specific dialogue and these are ways in which I've been able to use that in my work, or whatever it is. So it creates this kind of. The, the film is not, the, the film is, uh, what brings people together.
Right, and, and for its conversation.
Exactly, so then we are able to, that, I believe that's how the library could kind of move things forward, is to provide, uh, the space. To provide some connection to resources and to also provide kind of like a, um, holistic approach to. Um, film, like, and it goes back to kind of critically thinking about, you know, what's going on in the world around us, and it gets us to engage. With one another and have really pertinent discussion and, and create communities, so, yeah.
About the fund, like we have got the fund, but we have to ask the city to.
Does the library have funds?
I think, um, those, the cost of the films would.
That's a very good price.
It would fall well within.
I mean, like, I donate for two or three movies.
Yeah, so it's very, um, I believe, you know, we have a very, um. We have a great programming budget that we're able to do, make ma- magic happen every, every month, um. So, yeah, I believe it's well within our, our, our budget.
That's very good.
She just stole that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, make magic happen every month.
You know, like.
I have, uh, can I take that? Yeah, it's gonna be the theme of our county's library thing.
Right, right.
I needed one.
You know, I mean, right, if we're talking about.
Make magic happen is awesome, it's like, yeah.
It's positive.
It's possible, uh, so, um, thinking about our work plan, first of all, let's give you a hand for bringing that to.
Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Um, yes, and, um, it looks like it might fall under our, um. Promote the commission's purpose and inform the Gilroy community of library commission's presence and visibility. So would you think, Adam, that would fall under that part of our work plan?
You know, that was my question, and I think that. Yeah, I mean, I was looking at that, or.
It falls under represent the library commission at library function and programs as well.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that might be more appropriate because of the programming.
Okay.
Aspect, um, this way, I mean, I guess how I'm envisioning it is if, once the pro- once the film festival is happening. And, you know, it's the time for the, to actually show the screening of a film. Someone from the library commission could, they usually do, like, cuz I've been to it before, they.
Yeah.
They, oh, someone opens the.
I like that.
The, the, the film, could be filmmaker.
Beautiful.
The sponsor.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I like that, um.
To have a moderator.
A moderator.
Moderator. So it's an opportunity to plug the commission.
I like that, so if this is in April, it's April twenty twenty-six, is that right?
Yes.
And that's like very close by, even though, cuz it's already July, it's like ten months away. So what kind?
Three months.
I know. It just seems like December's really, it was, I'm sorry, so, um.
Like, again, a good shift of perspective, right?
So, uh, um, library, count, no, county, city librarian, you're a city librarian. What do you, wh- when, when do we start planning for something like that? Because does that mean that it would, events each, I'm, I don't know how it works, but events would go on the program calendar and we'd have to pick. The movie or how, okay.
So, it's our work plan.
It's our, okay. Okay.
So we decide, how much can we do by April? Do we want to just do one film? Do we want to do one film and host the, host it during the, um. The actual festival?
Yeah.
Or do we just wanna work up to it? So we have now until. January, maybe?
Yeah.
To decide to watch the movies, to decide what programs we want to participate in. And we can start small, we can start with two.
Yeah.
Films and two or three, and then maybe the festival, so that would be a great opportunity to introduce ourselves at the festival.
So it, it just, something that came to mind is, um, so you, you have a role within the film festival, um. I'm guessing like analyzing, not analyzing, but, uh.
Reviewing them, yeah.
The films, so that would be separate from the commission.
It is.
Okay, so, so the, in terms of what the commission's role is, um. It, it should be something more that's very much in line with one of these items, which, which we've talked about, which is representing the library commission. So maybe if your, if the library's hosting the event, and let's say it's, you know, quote-unquote sponsored by the library commission too, and then. You're representing the commission.
Well, let me back up, because we're, we are also involved in the program, so this is part of the program. This is a program that the library is going to have.
Okay.
So we are going to host this program.
Yes.
On top of. On top of representing, so it falls in both categories.
Which two category?
Uh, um. Well, it would, would it fall under promoting the commission's purpose and informing the Gilroy community of library commission's presence and visibility?
Okay, and the next one?
We can do it that way as.
It may be, it may be fall under more than one.
And where's the other one?
The other one would be what Adam was saying was represent the library commis- wait, represent the library commission at library function. So we would be at this event. Or, and programs such as storytime, staff appreciation, so forth.
So this would be the same as if I grabbed a book and go read storytime, this. But we're doing, you know, I would have to research what book I wanna read, I would have to speak to them to make sure that it's okay. This is just with the film.
Yeah, the, the first one actually fits, represent the library commission and the library function.
Okay.
Have you taken more active role in?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, sir, my guy, that's.
Thank you.
I'll give you a.
You summed it up, we're taking a more active role in the program. I'm writing that down, can I say that?
Oh, no, I, I got my job done for the mall, thank you. Um, okay, so, so we don't have to add anything to our work plan, this is already in it, that's what I'm thinking, okay, so.
Before I was doing things individually, I was like, oh, I went to this and, you know, we were, I was. You know, but we, this is something that we can do from here, we don't have to.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we could work together, we can collaborate, we can see what the community needs.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I have a question to add, and if you think none of this here fits what we want to do, can we add any more items?
Well, here's, so, uh, so that's a good question, so what has been approved, you have to stay within the confines.
For two years.
Of these bullet points, that's why I was trying to see where this one lands.
Yeah.
I agree, I think it lands, uh, at least in, from my perspective, the represent the library commission.
I agree with that.
Storytime, so, um, yeah, you just don't wanna deviate from what's already been approved.
Right, um, okay, and our next meeting is that, we don't have any meetings until February, no, until, um, uh, September or October. Right, cuz we don't meet in the summer.
September.
I think it's September.
Okay, so September and the thing is April, so would you, um.
So September, November?
I'm thinking September, if you can come to us with a, a plan of what's that, what it might look like, and then we can start.
Yeah.
Collaborating with the library, I mean, do we have to pick?
What it looks like.
Well, like, what we would be doing, like, when we would pick the films, when we would, what the programs would be, what they would be called, or is this already?
So would you want me to decide what programs that we want to look for films for, is that, and then. So it's kind of shortcut, and then in September, we're looking at films, cuz I can do that.
Yeah, oh, I was thinking, uh, because I am completely, I have no idea what this is, so it's all new to me. So the films, like, are the names of the films somewhere where we can?
Okay, so they are independent filmmakers, sometime first-time filmmakers.
Okay.
And, um, we're getting the films from this past festival.
It's gonna be, oh, so, okay, so this, the past festival, okay, so the films are already available.
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, the films are already available.
Yes.
And so we would pick two. And do two programs with them for April, in the month of April.
If that's what we want, or if we wanted to do one in February, cuz it's Black History Month, and we wanted to find a film that. Related to the programming that the library has for that, or if we wanted to do Women's Week or Month.
Okay, now I get it, okay, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
My suggestion is if we can prepare a synopsis of all these movies, so we just could read, and then next time.
She gets twelve hundred submissions, so you took.
Twelve hundred submissions.
Selection, not half twelve hundred.
Okay, tell me again, I'm sorry.
A synopsis of few of them, that being would be sweet for our community. And then if you send it advanced to us next time before coming to the meeting, we can just look at the synopsis and say, okay. Yeah, I think we should select maybe one or two from this, from this.
So I can hear, I think your first piece that you wanna kind of figure out is. First of all, how, how many you wanna do, because it's kind of part of your work plan to present or moderate.
Right.
So you kind of have to decide that piece, and then from there. Is there a certain topical theme that you feel like would be best for the library?
Right.
And it could be around.
Absolutely.
Things we already do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or it could be.
First time.
Something, yeah, you might, yeah.
Since it's our first time, so I'm thinking two.
Yeah.
Movies.
Yeah, I agree.
And or a book or something like a, a book that, uh, that, that's for children or teens, that somehow, I don't know. With it.
We could put, um, there'll probably be book lists or, you know, displays already about a certain topic. So you'll, you'll maybe just have to decide kind of what. You know, theme are we talking about, are you talking about, do you wanna talk about environmentalism, do you wanna talk about?
Yeah.
Disparities, do you wanna talk about women's history, black history, queer history, you know, where.
Yeah.
Where, where would you like?
I'd like to see movies which has got personal touch, like a person, a family who lives in poverty, so people.
Uh-huh.
Or abstract thing about environment or disparity and.
Uh-huh.
People don't relate to it, or this is all.
Like a, like a human story.
A human story, definitely, yeah.
More active than.
A human story.
Just talks about disparity and making a political show, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Prefer that kind of.
Start.
Yeah, I like that.
I can do that, so somewhere poverty, and what was starting either.
Human story.
Even, uh, environment is good. And it's like a personal touch, somebody who had been suffering from the, um, pollution in water or air. Community that is suffering from those issues.
Okay.
Uh, so it makes it more, uh, more touch.
Relatable, okay.
What do you think about caregiving? There's so many adults.
Yeah.
Caring, well, this is what I've heard, now, many folks had children later in life. So now, this thirty-four-year-old is taking care of a seventy-year-old mom, and they're not even able to really live their life. Or it's a grandmother taking care of children, so if there's any kind of.
I like the other one, my.
You like that one, you wanna be thirty-four, no.
No, no, because.
Well, it's the sandwich generation, right?
It's the sad, that's what they, I, that, was it, yep, I heard.
So my, my mother took care of my grandmother and also helped me by taking care of my children.
Yeah, that's a good.
So I believe that.
Would you like to be a guest speaker?
No.
Yeah, we got that knocked on.
So, you're so, okay, seen, um, aging, like aging population, that's very pertinent for Gilroy.
Absolutely.
People with young fa- balancing families.
Yeah.
Uh, in Gilroy, um, there is actually, at the South County Youth Task Force, they just mentioned, um, Public Health did a survey on. How climate change affects families in the areas.
Yeah, absolutely.
Focused on South County as well, as many people are exposed to different climate change events, uh, as part of.
Like today, it was burning up hot, it was really hot. Um, I like the idea that you were saying about, um, like Women's History Month, we might do something, or Black History Month, or Asian Pacific calendar month. Tying that into something that you guys are already doing.
Right, and, and also like a human, you know, like you're saying, an interest piece regarding any of those things, right?
Or the farm workers, which is.
So just so, I, I have no better understanding, so it sounds like, um, cuz you're, you're, so you're giving, um. Possible themes.
Yes.
And then Commissioner Lowery's gonna come back at the next meeting and say. You know, these, these film titles fit within the discussion.
Yes, I like that.
And so you wanna narrow it down, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Or you wanted to, wanted me to send you the films before the session, so we could already have them watched.
Can you do that, can you send us, yeah, that would be best.
Or is that a lot?
They have to be a meeting.
That might, okay.
No, no, I mean, seeing it beforehand, so when we come here, we can.
Uh.
Or carefully.
We see.
Okay, no problem, see.
Normally, I would say, put it in the package.
Yeah.
Put a video.
The Adam was meant to come here today, he's like, this was, this was an Adam, man, Adam's like, what?
Can you put it on a share point so we can access it with you?
Let me, uh.
Part of the package.
Yeah, let me, I will, I will have to back you.
Okay, thank you so much, and I like your total shirt, by the way, um, Cassandra.
You're more than welcome to have a, a viewing party here, too, love, right in this.
Yeah.
If we have, if we wanted to do it the day of, that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
We can have a special meeting.
And we've had those before, we've had a special meeting before. Yeah, I like that.
Um, like you don't take any action.
I like that.
Watch the film, you take your notes, and then maybe the next week you have a meeting.
I like that.
So the week before your meeting, uh, you, you watch the films and then.
I like that.
Yeah, you, you could do that.
I love that, I vote, do you wish to vote for that or?
You don't have to vote for that, let me, let me get some clarification, and then.
We'll follow.
Okay.
I guess I'm shaking things up a little bit.
Yeah.
This is, uh.
And you came on the right day.
Yeah.
I had a follow-up question too.
Yeah.
I wasn't quite following, if that's okay, can I? I was just wondering if, if the intention was to be a part of the Jasper Poppy Film Festival, or if it's like an extension of the film festival. So like what you were suggesting, kind of two things, right? So it could be, you do it in the same weeks at, and be a host site for the festival. I mean, the library with the commission, um, meeting moderator and programs, right? Or you could take the films that have already happened from the previous year and then show them.
We're doing both. It looks like we're doing both. So I was looking forward to the community impact part of it. Um, leading up to, but he had a good point about, um, the other part of our work plan was to promote the commissioners. So if we were, you know, um, yes, part of it that way, that would be perfect as well. So a little bit of both.
What was it? I think my source experience with the poppy.
Poppy Jasper.
Yeah.
My thinking is going back to discussion about, um, being beyond the sea. Because this is going in various places, like Morgan Hill and other places. So we like to make it more focus on this community, this is a, isn't fair to say the agriculture community.
There is definitely a lot of ag that still happens here. Um, there are, this is a very, um, working family community.
Yeah.
So I think all of those things would be themes that people would love to hear more about and relate to.
Yeah.
I, I think that's there and there, for sure.
All right.
Oh, wow. Okay, that sounds fabulous. So we're not taking any motion, we're not making a motion. We were having conversation. Um.
Maybe support the, the proposal.
Uh, provide comments, library question will pen. Okay, so we provided comments to the library commission work plan, and I'd like to provide one more comment to the work plan, which is, um, quest, two questions. Um, as commissioners, are we able to speak to the city council? Or, or can we only speak when we're presenting that once a year? How does that work?
Um, could you be more specific?
Absolutely. Okay, so when the commission is voting on our work plan, can we be present? To give comment or not?
Wait, you mean when the council?
The council. What did I say?
You said the commission. Um, so you're talking about like at the, at the budget meeting?
Yeah.
It, oh, of course, it's open to the public.
It's open to the public. Okay, so I didn't know that, but that's my responsibility. So I thought that, okay, so when the city council is voting on our work plan, we could be present to be the voice for the work plan?
Okay, so for any time that the city council is voting, uh, whether it has to do with the library commissioner or not, those meetings are open to the public and anyone.
Can give comment.
Commissioner can provide comment. I will just add.
Yes.
Uh, because there are other representatives from commissions who do do that.
Yeah.
Is, it's very important that you acknowledge, hi, my name is, and I'm a library commissioner.
Ah.
But that you're not representing the library commission's view. It's just, you just happen to be a library commissioner. Does that make sense?
So what about if we authorize everyone to talk on behalf of the commission on this topic?
Okay, so, uh, let's say you, you pass some sort of resolution where, uh, and it was formalized and it was here at the meeting, then you could say on behalf of the library commission.
Ah.
So that would be a little different. Uh, but if you were going to just advocate for something, you can certainly mention that you're a library commissioner.
Yeah.
Not doing it on behalf of the commission.
Oh, so we'd have to have a resolution saying that one of us is gonna go on behalf of the commission to speak to this.
Well, that's just an example.
Oh, that would, that's an example. Okay.
Well.
Um, well, no, what, well, what I would like in the, in the minutes is for, for the work plan is that, um, um, as our commission grows, cause we would like to have five commissioners or at least one more commissioner, that it is highly beneficial if two folks or the commissioners can all attend a conference. Because it also builds us, especially since we only meet five times a year. So, yeah. Do we meet five times or four, five times? Yeah, so that's, yeah, and I think that we spent a lot of discourse over the benefits of that, so I just don't wanna lose that. And I think after twenty twenty-seven, that we'll continue to advocate for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, is it an issue if we make a resolution and then she goes and talks?
Well, well, I think it's, that's a very good point, but it's already been voted on.
It is closed, correct?
Yeah, the budget has been adopted, and, uh, as, as it was stated in the report, there's enough funding uh, for this conference.
Yeah.
Coming up to send one person because it's, it's down south. Again, in next year, if, I don't know if CLA ever holds it in this area.
They, they have before.
Yeah.
Been a while. Um, but let me see if they're, they have a posted schedule.
Um, and, and we can move on from it.
Potentially, or if there's a Bay Area Library Conference of some sort.
Yes, or the, uh, yeah, that all three of us might wanna go to something together.
Yeah, so then that would provide an opportunity. It's just that this particular conference, because it involves hotel.
Yes.
Flight, transportation to and from the airport, and meals per diem.
Yeah.
Um, it actually costs, we, 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 uh, budgeted out about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. No, I could, I completely get all of that. I just, we just know for twenty-six and for twenty-seven, we're sending one person. And then after that, we'd have to have a resolution to speak of why.
That's great.
So good news.
That's all.
The one in twenty-six is in Sacramento.
Perfect. Well, is that, does that, is that drivable?
Drivable.
I mean, no, like, if it's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes, yeah. So it would certainly save on the flight. I don't wanna say that, oh, now you can send.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no.
I, I, you know, because there's still the hotel and there's.
No, absolutely.
Yeah.
But it can also be something else that's local that we attend. You know, it could be, I don't know, in San Francisco or what have you, that's an all-day event for, for boards, or, yeah, that we can go together and have our own time, because I don't think we've ever been together with just us three.
Yeah. Well, there's always a forum.
I was gonna say, we have the forum in February.
That's in February, so that might be a good opportunity, um, and we always love.
Make sure you're invited to that.
I'm sure there.
Is that the Punch Forum?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You've all, you've been in.
I, I know I've been to one and I had a blast.
Yeah, we're gonna, this year is gonna be really fun, a little sneak peek. We're gonna head, show everyone the new AMHS system that's being installed downstairs right now, and in the new building. So just a sneak peek, you'll wanna kind of.
Really doing great stuff.
And we'll have, it will be in the new building.
Oh, yeah.
So, stay tuned.
Okay.
So we'll, and I can now keep looking for opportunities that may be local and that, you know, might be pertinent to what you all are doing.
Yeah.
Um, that's a way that I can kind of, now that I know that that's kind of a goal for you all to kind of attend together, I can send those along to Vince, and maybe that's part of something, so that there's some offerings that are closer by, so you all can attend together.
Yeah, that sounds fabulous. Okay, so we're gonna.
If I ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
About the protocol, now even if she's authorized to talk on behalf of the, the commissioners, she would treat her as a member of the public? Or that could be different?
Uh, if it's during public comment period, it, it could be anyone from the public, even if they don't live in Gilroy.
Oh, she can as big as commissioner, as a representative of the commission, the library commission, not as a member of.
Um.
Well, in that case, maybe there's like, for example, she does, the library commission does an annual presentation every year.
Yeah.
And so that is definitely representing, that would be an example of representing the commission.
Yeah.
This is something that essentially you're highlighting all of your accomplishments. Um, and actions that you, you've done over the past year. For example, I think it was last year.
Yeah.
It was right after the conference.
Yeah, absolutely. And we said, please send this next year. Yeah.
You know, so, uh, that would be representing on behalf of the commission.
Yeah.
And so, and that wasn't during public comment, that was its own.
Yeah.
Okay, for the sake of time.
Yes, I know.
We should move on.
Okay. Um, so now we're gonna go to, um, item eight, library reports, and we're going to hear from our county library report for May and June. From, um, not Jennifer Weeks, but Ma- Megan, a beautiful name, from Santa Clara County Library.
Great. Well, thank you for having me. So again, my name is Megan Lawd, and I've been with the library district for about a year. Um, as the financial and administrative services manager, so, um, I work a lot with our accounting system and our financials, and I support the executive team and all the community librarians, um, through the budget process. So in my role, I'm happy to report our budget has been approved for this year. We just finished up, um, as you probably know, we have a JPA.
Yeah.
Um, and so that board approved the budget, and then it goes forward as a department of the county also. So the county of Santa Clara also approved our budget. So that is done, and we're moving forward with some new plans, things like seven-day delivery from our warehouse.
Wow.
We're gonna get a, uh, the small bookmobile is, is gonna get an upgrade, and we're also fixing GoGo videos. So, so every library is gonna have one of those. So there's benefits for all libraries. Um, and then as Cassandra mentioned earlier, there's a little bit of equity in hours, so we're looking for hours expansion in the future. Uh, but we don't have that all ironed out yet, so we're not be announcing that yet. Um, I know Jennifer submitted, uh, kind of a lengthy May report, so you probably saw that in the packet, and I will just add a couple things. So as you know, June is Pride Month, so there's many, many Pride activities. We're very excited about it. I'm not gonna talk summer reading, cause I know you are. And then the other one is, we have a distinguished author coming up in July, um, Daniel Silva.
Hmm.
Which will take place, I think, in Campbell.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, if you, yeah, if you're interested, it's on the website, and, uh, and apparently, he's bringing along his wife, who is like a high-ranking reporter, so she's gonna be the moderator. Of course, there's breaking news and then, no, but. But so it should be pretty good, and, um, we're excited about that. And then just a couple other things that I mentioned, we do, um, so the library district's, uh, main headquarters building is located in Campbell, and right next door, we're opening our first learning, uh, center called the Nest, and that will happen in October. And then the forum likely will take place in that building. Um, in, in, uh, February, and we, of course, would love for you all to come.
Oh, are you guys gonna have a cunning ribbon ceremony?
Uh, we are. We're doing that at our JPA meeting in October, but in, in the spring, we'll have tours and stuff. Um, in that forum, um, event. So that's all I really have, unless there's questions for me, but I'm just here on behalf of Jennifer, and again, she was double booked today, so.
Tell her we said hello when you answered, but we glad you're here.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm really pleased to be here.
The, um, uh, the library administration has a new building, is that?
We have a second building, so, yeah, we're in our regular building, but then we're opening up a learning center next door. It's literally next door.
Library, okay.
And will the learning center be for kids, adults?
So our literacy program and our virtual library, the Nest, yeah, the virtual library and literacy program will move in there, but it also has enough space for us to host educational events for the whole district and, uh, things like that, so.
Wow, very nice.
Megan, you're a primary pleasure for Jennifer or just for this meeting?
Just for this meeting, but I told her, I'm always welcome to take this, uh, meeting. First of all, you're all so wonderful, and I'm excited to see that what's happening in South County. But I also live in San Juan Batista, so it's highly convenient. Yeah, so I go to the Morgan Commission, Morgan Hill Commission, and, and I just keep saying, send me to go, why is that me, so I got to do it.
Love to have you here, even if Jennifer is here, you're most welcome.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, that's great. I'm sure Jennifer will be here next time, um, but anyway, it just worked out that I can be here too. So thank you so much for having me.
Well, thank you for coming. Um, okay, and now we're going, do we have any public comment?
Fine.
Okay, so now we'll, um, do we have any possible action, um, regarding the county library report?
Uh, just receiving comment.
Okay, perfect. Now we'll move to eight point two, Gilroy Library Report from Cassandra Wong, our Wong, our Gilroy librarian.
Hello.
Hello, Cassandra.
Um, I'm just so, um, I'm just so impressed with you all, you know, having new ideas and diving right in, um, I really do. But.
Take us for the ride.
I think it's really, um, a wonderful, you know, again, we're, we're, we're a sparse commission, and we'll add more people.
Yeah.
Uh, but your enthusiasm and your, um, your ability to work together really well and, and come up with ideas, I think is really awesome to see. So thank you for doing that.
Well, thank you for that comment.
Cassandra, don't take us for a ride. If more you do that, you have less time to present.
It's about business, you know. So, um, very quickly, I'd like to show you something. Uh, something I'm really proud of, and I think you all should, uh, be very proud of.
I see, I see something on YouTube.
Yes, so I'm gonna just, uh, we're gonna play, uh, let me go to full screen.
Okay.
I would like to do that, and let me get.
It did its volume. Is that, that is beautiful.
Sorry, it's gonna be a little loud. I'm trying to figure out this volume thing.
Thank you for being here. This is really. Thank all of you for being here. This is really an exciting moment, opportunity. We had a great kickoff in Morgan Hill. Saratoga is doing wonderful with their play space. And we know that for Gilroy, this is gonna be the exceptional play space here, and we know that active play is critical to the learning abilities of children, and so this space will really play into that.
It is very important for children to have active play, imaginative play, so that they develop the early literacy skills that they need to become the fantastic leaders. So we are so excited to invite you here to the urban excursion. And I'd like to introduce your community librarian, Cassandra Wong, and your supervising librarian, Elizabeth Munoz Prossis. Just like over there, you begin learning from the time you open your eyes from early. So parents, caregivers, you are essential to providing that support for learning at a very early age. Um, you are given the gift of opportunity to your children by being here today at the Gilroy Library, and we're here to support you seven days a week in your lifelong learning goals. The library district designed this play space to incorporate elements that build early literacy skills, so every child can become a successful learner.
Beautiful.
Well, thank you very much. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank, uh, councilmember Zach Hilton, councilmember Chairperson Bugatti, and the fellow members behind me. I was the member Dion Baraco, um, for being here today. It's a beautiful library, um, like all the you kids. When I was young, I grew up right down the street, and I spent a lot of time, uh, in Washington, um, but some of you young folks might not know this, this was a different library back then. It was a one-story flat, very small library compared to this now. But let's get right to it, I know these kids want to get to.
They may get to go in, oh my gosh. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yes. Did you guys cry on that day?
I'm gonna cry right now.
That is so beautiful.
Um, so again, I just kinda wanna highlight that, like, you know, um, we're very fortunate
Yeah.
To have such a supportive community, and it's our kind of, uh, I don't know why, it's a little game of share anyway, uh, but, uh, that's kind of where we're at. Um, that is, again, like, kind of Jennifer's vision for the future, uh, as our leader, and also, you know, as part of our administration, uh, we really are trying to create a library. And I know you all heard of it for years now, but this is not a library of today, it's a library of.
I love it. Yeah.
Um, this is our opportunity to, I think in collaboration with the city right now, it's, this is a time for a lot of innovation, a lot of looking at where we're at and where we wanna be, creating a lot of connection, uh, bridges for families that have been here a long time, as well as families who are maybe just joining the community. So the library is kind of perfectly placed to provide that type of service, and things like the play space are ways in which we can do that. That create community, that create a welcoming environment, um, that remind people that, um, community is, it just doesn't exist in a vacuum, it has to be built. community is, it just doesn't exist in a vacuum, it has to be built.
Absolutely, oh, that's good too.
Very, very, very. So it's an act of, it's a, it's a true, you know, love is a verb, right, like, it requires action, and we're able to do that through our programming, um, through the things we provide, and and the play space is just another way that we can do that. Um, yeah, so it's kinda like the big, the big thing.
Oh, yeah, you have, yeah.
The numbers, like.
I love how family daycare providers or FNNs, F- 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 yeah, or friends and neighbors, or even just a person caring for two kids can come to the library and everything they need is there, the stimulation, the quiet time, the little, yeah.
You you are sure anything?
Um, it was from May seventeen.
Oh, okay, you sent.
May seventeen.
Yes, you did send, I was, I, yeah, I couldn't attend, or else I would have.
Don't worry about it.
Yes, I I got it, that caused a whole lot lately.
Their experience, um, so, yeah, that's kind of, I I just kinda wanted to show that, to kinda talk about where we, where we are, um, uh, for brevity's sake, um, just a few things that I wanted to talk to you about, um. Um, so I know you like the numbers, so I have them, uh, we circulated, so this for the month of May, we circulated about, uh, almost forty-nine thousand items. Um, about, almost twelve thousand of those items were ebook and audiobooks, so that is specifically people who are list Gilroy as their primary, um, library. So that's, that's a huge, uh, that's an uptick, and that's also, um, as we've noted, um, the numbers have only gotten higher and higher as more people know about the service. Um, I'd like to throw this in there, we still search to about five thousand DVDs.
Nah, it's good, don't, don't sleep on the DVD.
Don't sleep on the DVD, friends. That's from one month.
Yeah, that's good.
One month, yep, here, specifically here, so.
Lucky, five thousand.
Right?
Some people love their DVDs, honey, and they're playing.
I gotta say, um, again, libraries are a way to, as, you know, comfort, companies kind of dictate what's available to you.
Yeah.
Um, film festivals, and also the public library is a really great place to be able to find things that maybe are a little bit harder to find.
Absolutely.
Have more viewpoints, um.
It's very true.
So I always like to throw that in there, that, you know, we're still circling physical media, I'm a physical media forever protective person, obviously, but, um, so, yeah, we searched o- over five thousand DVDs, and in the month of May, we made, um, almost four hundred and fifty new library cards.
So amazing.
So, huge numbers, pretty big numbers up there, uh, and, um, statistically speaking, uh, Gilroy is, we are the library, and of course, you know, correlation is not causation, but, um.
I like that too.
Right, and kind of based on where we're at, um, library card signups, uh, we have the fewest amount of non-resident card signups.
Nah, so most people are, this is their library, that's good, that's what we want, yeah.
So, um, let's, let's use an example of maybe Campbell.
I'm just saying, Mel Peta.
Mel Peta, so, um, I used to work at Campbell, this is the only reason I know this number.
Okay.
As about, it's almost split fifty-fifty, who signs up for a library card, a San Jose resident or a Campbell resident, right? Cause Campbell and San Jose, they they border each other, like literally, one street is San Jose and one street is Campbell. So their ratio, um, at the time, you know, this was, I don't know, twenty-eighteen, was about fifty-fifty. So fifty, I I don't think it's changed that much, just because of where it's geographically located, so for us, ours is somewhere around eighty-five percent of the people who get a library card at the Gilroy Library are a Gilroy resident.
Yeah, sure.
So, and and that's really huge.
Cool campaign.
Because we're able to really.
Serve our people.
Exactly.
That's right.
This is very much.
The tax dollars that stays here.
Also, can it be offered this company?
Yeah, I I actually have about eight library cards, I've got them in Berkeley, in LA, and feel that, I do, I love libraries.
You should, uh, cause they, you'll access more materials, but, you know, so we do have residents from, um, uh, what's the county right south of this?
San Bernardino.
San Bernardino, I'm sorry, I wanted to say San Juan Batista, but.
That's a little city, yeah, their city.
So San Bernardino County residents, um, Monterey County, um, some Solano County, uh, because some people, right, if they're commuting and they're coming this way, or they work this way, um, they have a, it behooves them to have a library card in San Diego, so, we do, but I I like that statistic of us. Um, this library is very, uh, resident-focused, and so we're able to really, um, our residents are our patrons by and large.
Patrons.
And so we're very lucky, um, to be able to provide that return on investment or the services, you know, it's it's going directly to our community, so it's about that.
Is four hundred forty-one, is it harder than comparative average?
Well, uh, it kinda depends, oh, so an average for us, this was actually a pretty high month for us, we usually average about anywhere from two fifty to three hundred. So there was an uptick, uh, usually, I believe this is because we did a lot of public library, and also, we had the play space open up in May. So I think we have had some foot traffic, um, and some additional increases in circulation and things like that, because.
That's how we love that.
What other items, like forty-eight, I, a thousand items, so it is on average, or?
Um, it's it's higher, it's higher than average, uh, our average is about, I think from, let's say, year over year, I think we're up about almost ten percent.
Yeah.
This is, uh, because of the summer, or?
I think it's because of.
Your effort.
Listen, not to toot our own horn, but.
But toot your horn.
But, uh, I think it really has to do with, um, how we're doing outreach, so we do pop-up library to, in order to engage students who may not be able to get to the library on their family time, they're able to come on school time. Uh, so we do school pop-ups, we do, um, and then increased programming means increased foot traffic, which correlates to more circ, so.
That's what I would do, yeah.
Okay.
I love that, and looking at, it's it's fifteen outreach events, that means you guys are doing an outreach every other day.
Um, yeah, almost, yeah, so those are school visits, those are, um, outreach events with, uh, local community-based organizations, with local nonprofits, local, um, you know, county organizations, uh, again, we had thirty-nine children's programs, over two thousand people attended them.
Yeah.
What is the ten teen programs, thirty-two, so what is ten and thirty?
So we did ten teen programs, and we had two hundred and thirty-two.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
And, uh, we had forty-two adult programs and about five hundred.
To appreciation of the spirit.
So that's for the month of May, so kind of just, um, that right now, again, we're gonna have over fifty programs during the summer for children, adults, teens, and families, so please join us for that, um.
How's the citizenship, I mean, the passport, no, the pass, the pa- yeah, the passport office doing?
Very well, uh, we, the service is really well-used, um, I even have, so, the post office, the local post office. They said, oh, it's so exciting, we're able to refer people to you, because there are people who, uh, they they can't come at a certain time, or they ask for an appointment and say.
And they just come from the street.
What do I do, and then we, they say, oh, go try a library, so.
I love it.
Um, the community is, knows about it, right?
That's great.
Gilroy is a word-of-mouth town, so if the po- if the post office knows, everybody knows.
And eventually we'll have a post office here, a mini one.
Only if, only if.
Can we have like a satellite?
Uh, only if we get the staff from the Gilroy Post Office, because I absolutely love every single one of them, they're the nicest, greatest people.
I like the guy, yeah, the guy, yeah, they're cool.
They're absolutely amazing.
Cassandra.
Yes.
Would you like to be able to provide, uh, public notary services? There's an issue.
Provide what, my notary?
Notary.
Public all?
So, um. Notary is very useful, I think, I don't know how we would approach that, because usually notary, there's, you know, they, you pay for signature.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that would.
Try for the passport, right?
You can, you can do something like, when you have the, it's, it's expulsion of records, remember you, the library hosted that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but you can have notor- notaries volunteer their time on one day, or whatever month is, I don't know, you could think of a month that they happen. And then for that day, there's notaries where you can come get things notarized for free.
Uh, that is something to explore, I mean, we used to do li- lawyers in the library.
Yeah, like lawyers in the library.
So something to, yeah, let me.
Yeah, be good.
Let me.
I just threw it out.
It adds, which would add passport, of, so, or post office, because you have the thing that people come on in week, you know.
Well, let me do some research, cause I mean, we have a clerk's office, we have an assessor's office, um, maybe, maybe somebody from those departments would be able to provide services as part of a collaborative effort, but I will, that's a good idea, I will, uh, look into that. Um, so again, uh, lunch in library has started, uh, we offer meals Monday through Friday from one to two PM, and then afterwards, we have our programming, um, sometimes right afterward, sometimes closer to three o'clock, um, so feel free to spread the word on that, um. We are excited to be able to offer that service, and we know that, um, times are tough, and.
Yes, that is very true.
Every family could use a little help with, um, a meal, and again, the idea is that, um, we're building community, so uh, I ask everybody if they wanna join us for a meal, because, uh, kids are, kids are hungry whenever they're hungry, and everybody can join and sit at a table together and and get to know one another and.
That's beautiful.
Make a new friend, and so, um, we're really excited to offer that, um, and our play space is open again, uh, we have really amazing teamwork here, um, you know, if anybody asks, you know, we're we're sanitizing twice a day.
Nice, okay.
We have, um, safety guidelines, we're very, you know, committed to making sure that the safe is, the play is safe, and also, um, uh, we recognize the power of play and how important it is, uh, in our work and and what it creates for families and students for their future success, so. Um, yeah, so those are the kind of the things that are coming up soon, I mean, there's lists and lists of all the programs we do everywhere, all over the place, um. But please, you know, feel free to contact me if you want any of these electronic copies and like to give them out, and again, I really appreciate you all being, uh, so supportive, and if there's anything, you know, I I appreciate the feedback of ideas and and things we might wanna try, and, um, yeah, thank you again for jumping right in.
Perfect.
I have a question, uh, may I follow up on the library for, librarian for a day for high school?
Oh, oh, if anybody wanted to join for like.
Yeah, did you do anything to contact, uh, high school, you know?
So we participated in their, uh, job fair, and we did, um, opportuneteen, which is really great.
You know, the, librarian for a day.
Oh, my God, the library's so close.
Internet access available until five.
Yes, um, I can follow up on that again, uh, if anybody would like to be a librarian for a day, or that would come.
Student for high school, student.
And they said, oh, huh, opportu- I I love opportu- what'd you say?
Librarian.
No, opportuneteen, had.
Yeah, opportuneteen.
Appu- oh, my God, I love that, as as a teenager.
Yeah, yeah. And that was in March at Wheeler, and let's come on by the door, you should.
Yeah, you, what you, what you oversee, right?
Yeah.
Not, yeah, before you know it, your kids will be teens.
They're there.
Are they, oh, my gosh, oh, that's awesome.
I think that you would love that, you you have the librarian for a day to.
I could always, I could always throw it their way, I know they do principal for a day, so, hey, if you wanna come be a librarian for a day, come on down.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Every time, I don't mind saying it again, my vision for, you said the future, very good for the future, my vision is that we become the central activity for the town.
That's beautiful, brother, I appreciate that.
And I'm 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 with you all the way, I absolutely, I wanna be the first thing people think of in the back of everybody's mind, when they're like, when, where can we do something? Who's gonna help us, library, every time?
I love it. Okay, so we're gonna go to item number nine, staff commission comments, anyone have comments? Number ten, feature agenda items, is there anything, it would be the, um, pop.
Poppy John, yeah, from festival.
Um, anything else, sir, would you, commissioner, that you wanna add to the agenda, okay? That's it, and thank you, who do we thank for our our pins, I'm gonna put mine on now.
Uh, Vince.
Thank you, Vince.
Okay, so the meeting's adjourned.
Oh, the, um, so our meeting is now adjourned at, um, eight thirty-five PM, thank you, sir.
So I guess this is a record, um.